I'm going to call a public hearing for Watch 3, 2015. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood. Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Before we start with item number one, I would like to ask Councilman Lewis Joseph to come up. He has something he wants to present to the public and to the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those who don't know me, my name is Lewis Joseph, P.O. Box 621, Independence, Louisiana. And right quick, like, I'll be brief because they have to go through the school board and do the same thing, then AME council and do the same thing. I represent the Tangier Parish Council with the Police Judiciary Association of Louisiana, the Military Affairs Committee. At our last meeting about two weeks ago in New Orleans, we passed a resolution asking all governmental agencies to ask all veterans and all active military personnel who are not in uniform to render their hands salute when you all do the pledge of allegiance. I think you have some documentation from me. I came down last week and presented it to you. In 2008, President Bush II signed that legislation from Congress, but for whatever reason, it never got down to the local level. So when we met last, two weeks ago, I was asked to canvas and visit all the municipalities, all religious, social organizations, and see if I can get the word out to let our veterans know that they do have the authority to salute the flag when the national anthem is played or when the pledge of allegiance is recited. And I'm going to do the same thing for our schools and other agencies. Are there any questions? So what I asked the chairman to do is to get with the council secretary and place it in parentheses under the pledge of allegiance so it will give you an alert so you won't skip it.
That's a good idea.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from the council, from the public? Council, thank you for your service to our community, especially to our country. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Item number one, in order to approve the rezoning request by James L. Carter, occupant and Lawrence and Barbara Willis owners, to allow placement of mobile home meeting all code requirements on Block 12 of Block 9, Grandville Park District, located at 116 Stovall Street, Zone RS3, Zone 2014, recommended denial by Zone Commission. Josh Taylor.
He asked for ECU and he got recommended to deny. It wasn't in a proposed mobile home area and the planning commission didn't see fit to recommend to approve it.
Is anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Josh, I assume they were made aware that we have a public hearing tonight?
Yes, yes, they were. We told them the dates and everything.
Council comments or questions?
I don't have any questions.
Any comments from the public? Thank you, Josh. Item number two, in order to amend Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinance, does the city have to delete bicycle registration fees?
This is a ordinance that really wouldn't use. People want to use it to pay the fees for their bikes. You don't pay much money with it at all. So we figured we could just abandon the ordinance and encourage people to register their bikes for free. That's not that much work for us in the city. And if you don't have a picture of your bike or any evidence of that, that is your bike, you can recover your bike. So we're starting to encourage people, kids, families, and students to register their bikes. It is for free. It takes a lot of responsibility.
Any council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, would you consider having those registrations done at places where we really sell bikes and have it as well?
We have the merchants and dealership.
I mean, I don't know.
These would be done through organizations. I'm going to speak to merchants and see if they do it. I think we'd make great customer service to them.
I mean, it'd be beneficial to get the bikes registered and probably even more registered.
Because all they do is us to sit out and rust them out.
Right.
And we'd like people to be able to. So let me bring it up.
Any public comments or questions? Item number three, in order to declare surplus, Unit 281, 1991, E1 hail, 1250 GPM fire truck. Chief John Thomas.
Yes, we just come in, like I said, that's one of our old trucks. We've had it sitting for about six months, just waiting to make sure that we didn't need it. And it's a 1991 and we're ready to declare it surplus.
Any council questions and comments? Any questions, comments from the public? Item number four, in order to authorize the mayor to attend to a mutual aid agreement with the Natalebany Fire Department to include the transfer of Unit 281 pump truck.
And this, again, we're coming with that truck, what we're going to do with it. And it was more valuable to us to give it to Natalebany where it still is available to us through our mutual aid agreement. So we're asking to donate it to the Natalebany Fire Department.
And if they ever decide not to use it, does it come back?
There's a four-year, for their next four years, they decide. Correct.
Comes back to us and we put it in surplus. Probably the same thing we do with the two cars that we gave to the marshal's office.
Any council comments or questions from the public? Thank you, Chief. We'll move right into our regular scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, have we done this in person? Come on, Mr. Mayor, aren't we shy?
Let us pray. To Charlie and Richard, God, we come out and thank you for today as far as your blessing. Like for God that you lead and guide and have us, oh God, to be good servants, stewards of that which you have sat in our hands. Bless this council, bless this mayor, bless the entire city staff that we would carry out the duties and do it, oh God, the way that it should be done. The act of you bless our great city, bless your entire creation. Go with us and stand by and keep us. In Jesus' name we pray.
I'd like to ask all retired and active duty military to render a proper salute to the flag. Councilman Joseph, would you leave us a pledge?
Yes, it would be my pleasure. Ready to salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Vic, simply you have an annual report. Keep Hammond Beautiful.
I'll make it very brief tonight. I didn't bring my usual written remarks. First of all, I want to say it's good to be back again. I regret that the advocate chose not to cover the city council any longer.
That loss.
I've covered this council since Charlie McCaskill was mayor. So it is with regret that I no longer join you on every other Tuesday night. I think only Chief Duval now are around that long. So I've gone through three or four councils and a number of mayors. It's always been a pleasure because I love my city. And for that reason, I'm willing once again, they won't let me quit to serve as president and keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. It's obviously a pretty much thankless task. Nobody wants my job, so.
You're the manager.
First of all, we had, and once again, I think we had a great year, as you are aware. Earlier this year, we were named the outstanding affiliate and we got a nice plaque with it and a $500 check, which we put to good use. We've held 10 cleanups. Each month, you get the results of our cleanups. I can put it in easy terms. Each time, we managed to fill up the back of that small dump truck the city has. And the mayor joined us the last time. And I especially want to thank you, the council and the mayor, for allowing the city employees to work so well and writing the citation, naming us, putting in our entry to be the best affiliate. I wrote that our success depended on the very good working relationship between the city and the volunteers that we have. Dory St. Sierra does a fantastic job. So does Carliece and Bobby Mitchell and Joey and all of them. They're all a great big help. This year's Cleanest City Contest will be, the judges will come for the district two weeks from today at 10 o'clock. So if any of you can be here at City Hall, we invite you to come. And our numbers are small, but one success I think we've had is at least we are raising the flag. And how many people salute is up to them. But I think there's an awareness now about litter that we have not had before. Some of us are in close collaboration with the Keep Tangier Beautiful and, he left, thank goodness the parish council has decided to be proactive with their litter program. They've contracted with the Enete and the Discovery Center to begin an education program on the third grade level. We've got to start somewhere. I don't know the answer, but certainly education's always part of the answer. And there's an awareness now in the parish council's part about the litter problem. And of course, you have been very much aware of it. Again, the mayor has already come and joined us. You'll remember Palmetto Street for quite a while, won't you?
Sure.
There were some people that threw two or three blocks of that street that decided to create their own private dump right across the road from where they lived. We got, what, 24 bags at that one spot, something like that, I think.
I think whenever you follow them, did you never forget the street.
Yeah. So we're trying. Our numbers, again, are small, but we're still trying hard and I can and I ask for your continued support, which I know that we will get. At this time, Whitney, if you would hand me something. Every year, we present our almost now famous Golden Pickup Stick Award. We have two previous winners that I missed tonight. Maybe we'll stand as we make this presentation. And it's the first man presentation we've had. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to call Donny Lachele up here. I appreciate all the support, Donny. Donny is not new to the environmental awareness business. That's been his whole career. He's a very dutiful member of our Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. I keep trying to push the presidency off on him, but he won't take it. And Donny's always there, ready with his pickup stick. I usually make it detachable, but this one, I put down permanently because I know he carries his own stick with him at all times. And he puts it to very good use. And Donny also, every year, gives us some, the organization you're affiliated with helps financially support our efforts. So, Donny, we thank you very much for your efforts. We'll keep it up. If everybody was as environmentally aware as Donny, we'd have no problems.
Thank you.
That's all about that.
Mr. Vic, hang on. Got a little presentation. Can I ask all the members of the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee to come up there and please, whoever else on the committee, all of you, prepare and counsel.
Come on, Fran.
Yes.
Come on, Fran.
Yeah, no.
Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee along with the city. And the city council want to present to you this token of our appreciation for your untiring efforts and keeping Hammond Beautiful. You always walk into our meeting, by the way, just because you're not writing about it.
Good.
You can always come. So anyway, we appreciate how hard work the Young Night Committee does.
Thank you. Very pretty.
So let's get on together.
While there's no love lost for trash, at least protecting our environment is a labor
know that you were very helpful in having the recycling program implemented, as well as having those lovely blue covered carts with wheels.
of love.
I don't know, I had two ladies who had won the award.
Right.
So I think they're working out very, very well.
Well, I think I heard several people say, with all this money, we have, like, very
Dory, I'll take it. I'll take it.
glad that they're good.
Hey, Jake, three.
Thank you for that as well. All right, do we have any council reports?
All right. That's what we said. You did good.
I do want to make one mention. Mayor Penelope, I didn't get a chance to talk to
All right, scooch.
Hello.
All right, can somebody else come over this side? Dory, maybe? There we go. Thank
you about it either, but it's not, it's just an observation I had on this weekend. And
you, Councilwoman.
I did make a phone call to Sterling Properties today about it. But I have a 12-year-old and
I'm trying. I'm trying. I'm not a smoker. I would rather use on that side of the camera.
there's a big push to have kids find things to do on the weekend. And so the mall is
Yeah, I'm sorry. You two right there, just hide right in front of it. That'll do. All right, let me, three, two.
a big place for kids to be. I didn't realize until today that there's a curfew. I don't
You're good, Sam?
Sorry, me again.
Salute.
know if you guys, if the rest of the council knows or not, but there's a curfew that after
Thanks.
Okay.
Good job, guys.
8 o'clock, any kid 16 or under without a parent, they are not allowed to be on the
Thank you all so much.
property. I don't know if the council knew that or not. So I'm happy, I'm okay with the policy. But what happens is that all the kids move towards the McDonald's, the Wendy's, the restaurants, the Raising Cane. And this weekend, when I was out there, because my son was out there, to go out to hang out a little bit, there were at least 150 kids in those stores. And law enforcement was there and actually had some of the kids in the Wendy's locked down until their parents picked them up. So, you know, I asked the Sterling Property Manager to make sure that as a council or as a city, we can help to get the word out, to make sure that parents know that after 8 o'clock, kids are not allowed in the mall or at the mall without parents. I know that now, so I know my kid won't go there anymore without, you know. But that's a, and I'm happy with that. And I think that we got to think about also how that impacts our community because they're going to be somewhere and they're going to have an impact, adverse impact on commerce. I could tell you, if I was going to Raising Cane on Saturday night, I probably wouldn't have turned around and left because it was just that many people in there, probably not buying as much. But we have to really take a look at that as a council, I would think, and figure out, is there something that we, is there an alternative in our city that we can, we can help to alleviate some of the pressure that the vendors have or the stores have to, quote unquote, provide quality for our kids, you know, on the weekend? Just a point of observation from this weekend.
Any further council reports?
Sales tax is a little deceiving. 2013, we were at 1.4 million. 2014, we had a product with energy and they gave us a payment of $615,000. So that bumped us up to 1.4 million. So it looks a little deceiving as if we're down, but we're actually 1.8. But we're actually, this past month, we were at 1.4 million and we're actually 200,000 over. So we're in the positive. Sales taxes are still coming in very well. And that number, we're actually going to get two more big payments before the end of the year from energy. That'll skew the numbers again with sales tax. And once again, I want to thank Donny for his help with the Keep Hammond Beautiful and also Vic. So for all the work they do, we thank them very much because they keep us going in the right direction when it comes to trash. Also, with the city, we've changed the way we handle trash. One, every day of the week, we go into a different council district and pick up a street. So we're constantly on the trash pickup with these city workers. So if you can, if you ever think about it, be aware of where New York's streets are, let us know about it. We're going to try to do this on a daily basis. It's going to be a little hard when it's grass season. But right now, every day, we're in a different district picking up trash.
You mean, scratching aside the road, like, south?
Correct. So any help you can give us, any community activities you can do with people in the districts, try to get them out to help out, that would be great. That would help the city become cleaner, much cleaner than it has been. And we're pretty clean, so obviously, we're in the contest for the last eight years. You know, Janice said that she was planning on doing that.
Yes.
Which days will we get, will we know the day in our, in our district?
Just tell us what street it is. He's running the goes, something out there, I'm planning on getting a day. If I ride around, I see a road, I'm going to see a street that's in bad shape, we'll divert it to that area. But we'll try to keep it consistently going to a different district. And I've noticed a big difference on magazine in that area. And I think it's really making an impact.
Mayor, did we get a copy of sales tax report?
I don't think we did. Did you?
Can you email it to the council?
Certainly, right.
I just wanted to say, thanks, the mayor.
Can Sam come up, so we can put your name and address? We all know who you are.
Sanctuary, one or two roofed drive, District 1. I saw the city workers picking up trash in District 1. And I stopped him and asked him, and he said that the mayor told him. And I just want to thank you for doing that because it really is Keep Hammond Beautiful now. Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate that.
And if you were, you send these people out, you know, occasionally thank them because that helps the morale. You know, it's not necessarily fun to do what they do and what we do on Saturdays that we pick up.
And I will do my part as to help in pick up trash.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor, anything else?
That's it.
Do we have any new businesses in the council chambers that I like to recognize? If everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes of February 18th, I entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor. Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood. I'm sorry, Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Resolutions, new business. Number one, a resolution proclaiming May 2nd, 2015, household hazard waste recycling day. An urgent all-ressence is opportunity to protect our body.
Mayor. This is something we usually do twice a year and it's very successful. One reminder to the public, latex paint is no longer considered a hazardous waste, but you can put it down to drain because it is water soluble and clean with water. So you don't need to bring the latex with you. LEI, Louisiana Environmental Industries, is our partner. They'll be picking up electronics, tires, used oil, paint, aerosol cans, fluorescent lights, batteries, and more pesticides this year. They said they can take more pesticides. So this is a good event. If you have anything you want to clean out your garage with, closets, please render help.
I need a motion.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Carter Beard. I mean, Janice Carter.
That's a good one.
I'm having trouble with that one tonight. Lamar Marshall.
Oh, honor.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Number two, a resolution approved budget change for year 2015, number 15-04, transferring $30,000 drainage improvements for year 2014, Project 420-1149 from Roundabouts. Josh Taylor.
This should be hyperlinked. This is a budget change form to clean that budget up. This is the drainage project, which was initiated about 11 months ago. And it involved a lot of things. But we added three items to the project in July, about midway through the project. And this is a change order that basically handles that. It's about $30,000 in extra work. Some work on Elsie. We also ran into a pipe under the Cape Street Teacher Education Center on Southeastern Campus, and the city chose to go in and rehabilitate that. That was about $50,000 extra to do all that work. And then we also did some work on West Robert. It was not an original contract around by Dr. Hollins' old office, the installation of a driveway pipe. Robert Morgan uncovered a couple of rotten pipes downstream that were caved in, and we had to do a lot of work on Robert that was not in our budget. So this is a budget change that basically transfers money from the Roundabouts project, which from the city of Hammond's perspective has been completed. Our budgetary responsibilities towards that project are over. And there is about $40,000 there. I talked with the finance, the director of the mayor, talked with the finance department, and they recommended that would be a good source for 420 funds to make this budget balance. So this is a budget change that takes money from $30,000 from the Roundabout project and adds it to the drainage project for fiscal '14. Recommend approval. Budget change 15-04.
Any questions? Questions from the public?
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve change order number two, final, in the amount of $31,095.25, extra drainage improvements for year 2014, Project 420-1149, Lawson-Bonay construction contractor.
This is also hyperlinked. It's relatively lengthy, as all of our final change orders are. We have 44 bit items, and every bit item comes and goes a little bit at, two feet here and 10 feet there and 50 yards here and there. This basically is an accounting of where the extra funds went. So it's $31,095.25. I know we just transferred 30, but we had a little bit already in contingencies. So it won't be necessary to transfer 31,000, just 30,000. So this is the final change order. This will close that project out. There is a 45-day lean period. There is a punch list. A lot of dress-up work has to be done when the weather permits, some grading and so forth, some things they still have to do. But this would substantially complete the project. We'd record an acceptance in 45 days from now, disperse the retainage, assuming we have clear lean certificate and assuming the punch list work is complete. So I would recommend approval of change order number two for drainage improvements, FY 214.
And these improvements are at work, the location?
They're all over.
All over?
Yeah. Some was done in Lincoln Park, some was done, as I said, Robert's, some was done on Elsie, J. David Davis, all that big pipe we put in preparation for the sidewalk work. On the east side of J. David Davis, from Phoenix Square all the way to Fagan Drive, that was a part of that project. Some work we did on MC Moore by Johnny's district where that curve from MC Moore to East Church was so bad. All those ditches have now been covered in that area. That's an example. There was all of them. Probably eight or 10 different locations. Kind of a typical drainage contract for us. They're all like all over town.
Any questions? Any public questions, comments?
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to approve the appointment of Angela Ellie to the Hammond Housing Authorities. Mayor Penelope.
Angela, sorry about that. Thank you for being here tonight. Angela was nominated by George Anthony, who's currently on the board. Angela received a bachelor's license in English education from Southern University.
forth, some things they still have to do, but this would substantially complete the project. We'd record an acceptance in 45 days from now, disperse the drainage, assuming we have clear lead certificate and assuming the punch list work is complete. So, I would recommend approval of change order number two for drainage improvements, FY 214.
And these improvements are at where?
They're all over.
All over?
Yeah. Some was done in Lincoln Park, some was done, as I said, Roberts, some was done on Elzy, J. David Davis, all that big pipe we put in for, in preparation for the sidewalk work on the east side of J. David Davis from Phoenix Square all the way to Fagan Drive. That was a part of that project. Some work we did on MC Moore by Johnny's district, where that curve from MC Moore to East Church was so bad. All those ditches have now been covered in that area. That's an example. There was all of it, probably eight or 10 different locations. Kind of a typical drainage contract for us. They're all like all over town.
Any questions? Any public questions, comments?
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. File a resolution to approve the appointment of Angela Ellie to the Hammond Housing Authorities District. Mayor Penipenta.
Ms. Angela Ellie is in the audience. Just getting her party. I think we messed that up.
I'm sorry. Chuck threw me off when he went sat out. Item number four, resolution accepting. Work is substantially complete for drainage improvements for year 2014, Project 420-11409. We have a 25-day lead period withholding 10% drainage.
My fault. So, this is a follow-up to the same previous two items. This is a formal acceptance of the work is substantially complete.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, now, number five, a resolution to approve the appointment of Angela Ellie to the Hammond Housing Authority. Mayor Penipenta.
Angela, sorry about that. Thank you for being here tonight. Angela, who was nominated by George Anthony, who's currently on the board. Angela received a Bachelor of Arts in English Education from Southern University of Oregon. She received her law degree from Southern University, lost it in Baton Rouge. She's admitted to all federal district courts in state Louisiana as a member of Louisiana Association of Criminal Defense Attorneys. She's worked as Assistant Public Defender in 21st District. We're very proud to have you here tonight, and thank you for that you're willing to serve on the Hammond Housing Board, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Her resume is hyperlinked. The council might review, and she's here if anyone has any questions.
I do have one question.
Does Angela want to come up?
How you doing, Ms. Ellie?
Good evening. How are you?
Just for the record, just, you know, we had, we had talked about conflict of interests in the past, we had, we talked about any affiliation with Section 8 business or in real estate or in that space at all. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, was that question asked of you, or do you have any interest in that area in particular?
Yes, this question has been asked to me, and I did speak with Mr. Marshall earlier today, and I have confirmed that I have no affiliation with HUD or any affiliation with any Section 8 housing here within the Hammond area or period within the state of Louisiana or any other interest.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution, one, accepting a $456,000 transportation enhancement program grant from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for JW Davis and CM Fagan Pedestrian Project. Two, affirming cash match of $196,000, which includes a required local 20% match, as well as the cost of design, engineering, construction, administration, and testing. Three, assuming full responsibility for managing and maintaining the project and for all legal liability incurred as a result of the project. And four, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. Charles.
Thank you. I apologize for that mouthful. A lot of that language comes straight out of the state's language, proposed language. This is one that actually appeared before the council way back in July of 2011. We've had several other great Siwa projects that have been approved. Since then, we were very fortunate to learn that this one had finally been approved more recently, and so we're presenting it to you to basically accept the award. We have them at $2 ready to go. So, this is the first step in getting that project underway.
Any council questions, comments? Any public comments or questions?
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution, one, approving submission of an application for $90,000 for housing program grant to rehabilitate 10 homes in Hammond. Two, agreeing to match these grant funds with up to $10,000 in cash. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
This is one that we have applied for in the past. Last time we applied, we unfortunately were not, our application was denied. We're tweaking that application. We want to apply again. We're going to try to get more points as a point-based system, so we have an idea of what our score will be going in. And right now, we've got about 30 homes on our waiting list. Probably around this time, we see two or three homeowners come in every few weeks asking to, you know, what's the status of this grant program? Can I get on the waiting list? Am I on the waiting list? Can I update my records? So, we're asking you basically for the authority to go ahead and submit our application as soon as it's completed.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Number eight, a resolution to appoint David Vu as the Hammond Regional Airport Director with an annual salary of $60,000. Mayor Penipenta.
I'm happy to announce that David Vu has been chosen as our airport director. David is very impressive in the interview. It was overwhelming between myself, Loretta Savron, and Lace Land, and that he was the man to lead this airport. David started his career across the road from the airport terminal now at the Air National Guard. He was young, he went on to the Navy and to the Air Corps and trained in 150s, Cessna 150s, 172s, T-37s, and T-38s. From there, he went on into the intelligence or the government. 9/11, I believe he was part of the team that went out and rehabilitated a Soviet airbase in Afghanistan. From there, he did many other things in intelligence, and I think David's going to be a great asset to the city of Hammond, see her with his wife and two chickens, if you'd like to stand up. And if anyone has any questions for David, I'm very proud to have him on board.
Any questions for David? Any council questions, comments? Any public council comments or questions?
Have any advocates in here?
Just Loretta, how many did we have?
We had seven.
Actually, Dave was the last applicant, and we really didn't expect. We interviewed him because his resume was impressive, and he just blew us all away. He's very impressive. We're excited to have him. You have kids back there, too?
I do.
I can't see their work, their kids.
They're back there with grandpa.
Ah, okay. Hello. Okay.
The kids.
All right. You have something to say, young man?
And I just wanted to tell the mayor's remarks, she was very impressive. The syllable was very impressive while we conducted the interview, and I honestly believe he's going to be an asset to the city of Hammond.
Good. Good luck to you. I will tell you, I didn't see it before. I've never seen it. I've been in many interviews with Ms. Loretta, and when Dave, I didn't tell you this, but when you walked out of the interview, Ms. Loretta gave a very solid, very impressive. She was very impressive.
Good. Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Congratulations, Dave. Thank you very much. Number nine, a resolution to purchase a Kubota SVL 275-2HWC tractor from Star Equipment Company, state contract number 409678, for $52,731.74, Parks and Grounds Department. Mr. Peters.
Thank you. This is a tractor by Lonore combination that Leon had Anita brought to the purchasing department. Of course, it's on state contracts, so we were just able to go over to Star Equipment, who has a state contract, and make a purchase without a bid process. So, we bring it for approval from the council for a purchase.
Any questions, comments? Public comments, questions?
This is already been approved, kept out late.
I imagine it's in the budget, Mr. Peters?
Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, new business. Final adoption of orders to approve the reason on request by James O'Carter, occupant of Lawrence and Barbara Willis, owners to allow placement of low-homes in all code requirements on Lot 12, Block 9, Greenville Park Edition, located at 116 West Stowall Street, Zone RS3, recommended denial by zoning commission. I just want to ask again, is there anyone here representing this property?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion denied.
Number two, final adoption of orders to amend Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Hammond to delete bicycle registration fees.
Second. Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, final adoption of orders to declare surplus unit number 281-1991 East, or E1Hail 1250 GPM fire truck.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, final adoption of orders to authorize the mayor to enter into a rural, sorry, mutual aid agreement with the Tallahassee Fire Department to include the transfer of Unit 281 pump truck.
What, Chief Thomas, I believe, I missed your off. I think there were some changes today to that. Does it make a difference on the vote?
Well...
What kind of change?
Well...
It was just in the mutual aid agreement?
The city has a mutual aid agreement.
Okay.
And what we did was, we fine-tuned it to not to put the same thing that was in the mutual aid agreement, only put what was in there regarding the pump truck.
Okay.
And it does have a full year provision there, where if the fire department cancels the mutual aid agreement within four years, truck comes back to the city, so...
And that's already in the agreement?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's in the agreement as of today.
Right.
We approve it tonight for the year.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.